...two thousand and fifteen, the time is seven fifteen P M., and the regular meeting of the Greensburg Plan Commission is called to order. Would you like to go on the stand? I said, "It's right there." Please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President, if I may, I would simply remind the commission members that since we're in a larger room than we're used to, we may want to make sure we speak up so that everyone can hear us. The microphones in front of you, while they do have some amplification, are generally only for audio recording and not intended for amplification purposes. So, I would just state that for the record and ask that you speak up.
Thank you, Chris. The pro call, please. Blake?
Yes.
John?
Here.
Roy?
Here.
Bruce?
Here.
Kevin?
Here.
Tom?
Glenn.
Thank you, Josh. Please, all of you, receive minutes via email, and you can also print out copies as well then. If you have a chance to review those, if you have any changes or additions to those minutes. There are not a motion except minutes. So moved. Second. Second. All favor say aye.
Aye.
It's approved for last meeting. New business. Item one, rezon request, three oh two and three seventeen East Fifty Street from R two, one and two family homes to R four apartments. Greensburg Transitional Living Center is petitioner. Does someone here with the petitioner speak to this item?
Yes. Mr. President, if I may, just for clarification for the record, the first two items are actually old business. This was tabled last month following the motion. So, I would say that you need to classify the first two items on your agenda as actually getting over.
Okay. Circuit procedure, my pleasure.
My name is Ernie Bailey, Transitional Living Center. And our request is to get the zoning change from R one to R four. We, our address is going to be three ten Southeast Street. And we're planning to house in the living center up to eight women and twelve men. The maximum stay for these people would be around thirty days. That would be depending upon their needs. I'd like to read the admission criteria to you. They shall be and remain alcohol and drug free, have a solid connection with Decatur County, have a current photo I D. for a criminal warrant check, have the ability to care for themselves, have the ability to do general housekeeping duties for the center, have the ability to seek and hold employment, have no prior or current charges of violent offenses, have no prior or current charges of sexual offenses, must observe center curfews, must adhere to staff recommendations on achieving self-sufficiency, must adhere to daily and weekly chore schedule, must adhere to safety guidelines, domestic abuse situations are referred to new directions, and must have signed letter of verification of homeless status. The one concern that we have is that we're going to be a smoke-free campus, but we are going to designate a smoking area which will be on the east side of the building. The main focus that we're going to be working with these people on is education. We want to get them to self-sufficiency. And hopefully, we can do that within thirty days. There will be those people who would be there for one day, depending upon their circumstances, and others maybe a week, but, and not saying that it would stay at thirty days, because they need to be there all along. So that's our plan, and that's why we would like to change in our zoning. Any questions?
Now, your facility, is it handicap accessible?
It's handicap accessible on the main floor.
Okay.
We're going to be renting some space, and this weekend, we're planning on moving the Agape Center, which is the benevolent outreach activity for thirteen churches, and we're going to move them into the facility. And they would be working with us in connection with referring homeless people that might need assistance. Right now, someone in the homeless situation is put up in a motel, and that's kind of short-lived. And hopefully, we want to get people on their feet.
Will maybe supervise around the clock, someone be there all the time?
Yes.
Oversee them?
Yes, we will have a live-in caretaker that will actually live in an apartment right in the facility.
Any questions from the board? Does the audience have any questions to ask the petitioner?
Audience, certain questions that should be directed to the board.
Does the audience have any questions, direct to the board, please. Any questions from the board, vote for the motion.
Shall we make the motion that we approve the rezon request for three oh two and three seventeen East Fifty Street from R two, one and two family homes to R four apartments?
One second. Second. Call seconded. Speaker?
Yes, sir.
Do they actually make that motion, or are they making a positive recommendation to the Plan Commission?
Yes, it is a, you can't approve it, but you can recommend to the, to the city council.
So the actual motion? Admit that then that we give a positive recommendation to city council to actually do the rezon.
Correct. One second, that motion. Second. Tom, Mr. Board, please. Blake?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Glenn?
Tom?
Thank you very much.
Your approval, for the city council.
Good luck.
Next item on the agenda, primary plat for the Preserve at Sand Creek subdivision. Jeff Whitaker, petitioner.
If I may, just as a point of information for the record, this petitioner did throw before this body at its last meeting, and a public hearing was conducted at that time. Audience members and members of the public affected had been prior, previously notified, and were notified that this would be brought for a vote at this meeting.
We've made, we've made some changes that the department heads requested with the location of fire hydrant, some of the water tap services with Denny, and I've checked with Gary and the other department heads, I'm sure everything is in order according to their changes, so we're here to seek approval.
Is everybody in the package? Those important heads? Any board members have any questions?
I guess one question yet would be.
Yes, sir.
At the last meeting, we had discussed that the city will not be maintaining as far as stover, but will be taking care of the trash. Is that still in accordance with, with this, or?
Well, actually, what we're requesting is that eventually it is a city-maintained street with modifications to the ordinances, which I supplied. I don't know, do you all have those copies of that?
Jeff, when you came to us before, you were going to keep these streets property of the homeowners association, and it's my understanding that some streets and some construction work on that has already been done out there, and the city did not have any say in how that was constructed. And now you're asking for us to take them over. I'm not sure that in good conscience I can support the idea that the city takes those over, because I live in an area of town that was constructed prior to it being city, and we have problems with the edges of the streets and water flow and everything else. If the property owners association has it, I have no problem with it if they responsible for the upkeep, but I don't think I can support the city being responsible for those streets, not knowing how they were constructed.
Okay, that's fair enough.
That's just personal, it's just my personal feeling, and I'm not speaking for anybody else.
I understand that, that's fair enough, but when I was, when I came before, and it was said that if I was going to gate the community, it had to be private, and, but that's not in the ordinance anywhere. So, I was going on that assumption that that's the way that it had to be. So, the work that we had started was based upon that. I read the control ordinance from front to back, all twenty-two, I believe, pages of it, and there's not one that states anywhere. What it does state, and the things that we have asked for variances on and modifications, are all within the rights and the ability of the commission to modify Greensburg standards. I have no problem doing tests, core tests, for the amount of asphalt that I did lay and the amount of fifty-three compacted aggregate that we put down, and the surface that will be laid when the streets are finished. I just, I don't think that with what we've done, and with the easements, everything else that we've provided, it's out of the ability for the commission to accept the streets on behalf of the city, and I don't believe that it's right for you not to accept them. I will be out of contention in due time. But there will be twenty-five community members that will be saddled with that burden from here on, and I don't feel that that's correct, I don't feel, I don't think that it's right, and I found nothing in the ordinances that states that that's how it has to be. So, yes.
At the last meeting, when I addressed you, and I said for the record, and I want the people to know that, and you kind of forced, that you were stating this is going to be a private road, and it was going to be a responsibility of the people who reside there.
That's, Bruce, that's because that's what I was told, that if I was going to gate it, it had to be private. But that was not, that's, that's not true according to your ordinance. That statement is, is not part of your ordinance that I was going off of.
Well, and just in the past, as you've been a developer of other subdivisions.
Yes, sir.
And I know you're quite aware of that, when a road is put in place, there's usually someone there doing inspection, and then once it's approved by the city, the city's given a warranty on that road. As far as, like, a year or two for the bill stability?
One year after the completion.
And I don't know if you have some, someone in front of the city that was there when your vote was put in place?
No.
To back that up or not?
Well, that section of it, no, because there again, that section I was putting in was, I was under the assumption that it had, it was going to be private, because I was told that it had to be private, and the city wouldn't, wouldn't maintain it.
Well, I think from what I understood is that if you had city water, that you would have access from the city as far as, like, trash and rural yard waste, but the snowplows would not clean your street or maintain it due to you not having septic systems, sewage and stuff of that nature as well, because you're not entitled to all the amenities that the city offers, and you don't have, like, city water and city sewer, that's what I've been told, I don't know.
Well, it is all city water and city sewer.
Okay, well, it's on the impression you have the septic systems out there, not sewers.
No, it's all, it's all the city sewer, yeah. Yeah, it's all, there are, I forget the breakdown of how many are gravity flow and how many have grinder pumps that's force-mating, but it's all city sewer. The city will collect a tax on all the utilities and the property tax for all of them, so there again, I don't know, to me, I mean, you got, it's, it's your guys' fault, the, there's nothing in the ordinance that prevents you from making the modifications, and the city is collecting all of the tax for everything. There's no, you know, there's, there should be no benefit that I could read in all twenty-two pages of the ordinance, control ordinance, that would suggest, imply, or anything else that the city should not maintain those streets for that, for that particular part of the community, and.
If I may, and Mr. Whitaker and I have discussed this before, and I will be the first to admit, I think I admitted when he was in there, I disagree with him on some of his interpretations of our ordinance. What I will say is this, there is requirements in the subcontrol division ordinance that any subdivision that's put in place meet the design standards for the remaining parts of the city in Greensburg. My understanding is that the subdivision, as it is currently designed, does not meet the design standards, specifically that there are no curbs and there are no gutters. I will also raise as my opinion, I have concern as the attorney for the city that you are putting extremely expensive homes in the path of city snowplows and city trucks with no means or mechanism to stop them, and I fear for the liability of having to fix multiple houses when the snow gets heavy, and we're trying to figure that part out. I have no problem with this primary plat being approved as other subjects, or as other department heads have stated, but I will also say this, I agree that I do not believe that the city taking over the streets and having those eventually being given to the city and cared for by the city was part of the original primary plat request.
That's not, it wasn't, because that wasn't what I was told, Chris.
Well, but, again, I understand, I understand your current justification for the change of your position.
Okay.
But, what was in front of the, what in front, what is in front of the board is the primary plat request that was at the public hearing. So presumably, the things that were talked about at the public hearing are now different because you are asking for a different primary plat than you asked for before.
No, it's the same plat. I'm not asking for anything different. I made changes to this plat, according to the department heads. It's the same plat.
Okay.
I made changes to the hydrology.
Right.
To how much water we were retaining on site, according to Gary's calculations and what was done. The, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I don't want, I don't want to catch up, go ahead.
Well, it's, it's the same plat, there's no difference.
Right.
But the fact that, what, when I thought that if we were gating this community, which is what Gary had told me, this is what has to, you know, that's not part of the ordinance.
It wanted to be private just because it was gated. The request for private streets was because they were not going to be constructed to our standards, which are referenced in subdivision control.
And that's what we reference the modifications to.
Right, and that's, so that's what I, that's my opinion, to the extent that the Plan Commission wants it. My opinion is that if you approve this, it needs to be with the city, the streets being private and owned by the homeowners association. Now, if at some point in the future, that homeowners association wants to come to the front of the city and make a request, that's on them, and that would be on that Plan Commission at that time.
Why would that be different?
Huh?
Why would that be different than me doing it on behalf of them?
I don't know that it would. I think the results could end up being the same, but that's.
So what, what would be your, what, what would validate the fact that you think that this shouldn't be in the city limits, because the snowplows are going to throw snow fifty feet from the edge of the pavement? We have a, we have a wider setback than any other subdivision in town. We left more easement from fence to fence than any other subdivision in town. We still have twenty-eight feet wide streets.
Okay.
We put more space between the street and the sidewalks than what the, one of the requests was to give us, to allow us to put the sidewalks further back.
I, I believe you, I believe you have designed and hope to build a beautiful subdivision. Now, I'll ask this question to the city engineer. Does that plat meet the design standards for the city of Greensburg?
For the roadways now.
That's all, that's all I'd say.
We didn't say that it did. We asked for the modifications that are allowed in the ordinance, control ordinance.
That's correct, you are asking for those modifications.
That's right.
Okay. Chris, for the record, would you please add to each one of this modification request?
I would say yes, because I assume you're asking for all of the things that you handed these, the two copies to be approved with the primary plat, right?
Yeah, so just, there's only four requests there.
The other thing you can do is you can make your determination on the primary plat, and you can decide before the submission of a secondary plat, and get any sort of, I believe that's right. But, yes, the easiest way is just read it in the record.
Just read it, or?
To make sure that we're accurate, I would ask Mr. Whitaker, do you mind reading into the record your, the modifications that you're requesting, so the commission knows?
No.
Okay.
Private, read this, Jeff. Question is, is what can be done going forward in this, I have not been back there to see the road to make this, you know, how can we bring these specs up to the city standards? Is there anything that can be done to make this part of the city standard, part of our policy?
Underdrains and the curbs could be put in. If anything went out there, that was discussed with Mr. Whitaker, that those probably should go in, even if it was a driveway, he would put it back there, that he would turn it into a street later. Adequate base drainage is paramount for a road to hold up. Doubt that being in there, the curbs? I, I believe they should remain private. They will not last. We have standards for a reason. We don't want to go back and repay the mail roads. Our standards are for a twenty-year life, and it's my opinion that if they aren't mill according to our standards, they're not going to have a twenty-year life. Wonder if we spend a lot of money going out there servicing and mailing paying roads.
Do you have a proposal that Jeff, that would suffice me?
Ninety-plus percent of the streets in Greensburg don't have curb and gutters or underdrains or anything else.
And you have problems with, with why do we have this standard?
The standards are for a design of a flat field where there's no option for drainage or anything else. The fact that you use curb and gutter and pond, pipe and pond system. This is, I'll put these guys reading, I don't want you to read it, there's something else right here. This is from EPA, and this, this talks about here, the fact that pipes, ponds, retainage with curb and gutters, when it's not necessary, is not the means of doing it, the preferred means by many people, by many communities, there is absolutely no reason to put curb and gutter when you have rolling hills, funnel all of the storm water to a detention pond where all the pollutants and everything else from the roadways go into the detention ponds. You have no way that it hasn't, you know, no way for it to absorb, the ground to absorb any of the pollutants, then you dump those pollutants straight into the rivers and streams. That's not what EPA recommends anymore. Yeah, it's a, it's a good way to collect water, if you're going to treat the storm water as a waste product instead of a resource. If you want to use it as a resource, you allow it to absorb into the ground as much as possible without redirecting it into a pond to distribute it into your creek. That's, there's plenty of information from EPA, there's information from other communities that talk about the use of curb and gutter and ponds, and in our community, there are areas that there is probably no other way to do it. One is on the west side of town where the farm ground is predominantly flat. West Ridge, Hillcraft should have been, but it wasn't at that time. There is not much you can do when everything is flat but to collect it, and as far as this property at Sand Creek is entirely different. It couldn't be any more different, it's night and day. It's, it's rolling hills, it has natural drainage. We've taken extreme time and care to Ted Cooley has, has done even more as far as calculations to contain that watershed so that it's going out slower and it's at a better flow than what it is naturally, we're containing that. The fact that, and whether the streets, and as, as far as a twenty-year, you know, with, as far as the curb and gutter method, in this subdivision, if you did that, you would have no choice but to use ponds and dump all of that water into the creek, into Sand Creek. Not only does that go against what EPA recommends and many other communities, when it's possible, your very own ordinances, as you read through your ordinances, if you read through it, one of the first thing it tells you as far as the design of the streets is to follow the topography as closely as possible, whenever possible. Use natural drainage whenever possible. That's in your ordinance, I didn't write it, but I read it. I don't think that the streets would be something that would, once it's all finished, done, it's not going to be something that is, is going to be inferior in any way, shape, or form than anything else. This is, that's, that's not, that's not the case in my opinion. So, my opinion is, it's, it's a better use and design than using pipe and, using pipe and ponds and curb and gutters to dispose of your storm water. Every, every request that we made has the provision in your ordinance to allow us to do it. We have asked nothing that is not permissible within your own ordinance.
And if, I'm, I'm sorry, I think we got sidetracked on Blake's question. If you could just enumerate for the, for the commission, the modifications that you're requesting as part of the approval.
I'll just read what I've typed up here. As allowed in the city of Greensburg, Greensburg's ordinance one fifty-three point seven five. Modifications and exceptions, we are requesting the following modifications and exceptions to the design standards. Ordinance one fifty-three point one three, table one dash, design standards for- So, my opinion is it's, it's a better use and design than using pipe and, using pipe and ponds and curb and gutters to dispose of your storm water. Every, every request that we made has the provision in your ordinance to allow us to do it. We have asked nothing that is not permissible within your own ordinance.
And if, I'm, I'm sorry, I think we got sidetracked on Blake's question. If you could just enumerate for the, for the commission the modifications that you're requesting as part of the approval.
I'll just read what I've typed up here. As allowed in the city of Greensburg, Greensburg's ordinance 153.75. Modifications and exceptions, we are requesting the following modifications and exceptions to the design standards. Ordinance 153.13, Table 1, dash, design standards for streets, geometric design standards. The, which you don't have in front of you, but on the local, it's the, on the right of ways, the design speed, right of ways, street width, maximum grade, minimum grade, three-hundred-foot radius. The minimum length tangent, I don't think we're asking for that. It's mainly, it's the radius and the design standard of the curb and gutter. The request is to modify the geometric designs. The reason, when the concept of the preserve was conceived by myself and the designers, large lots with rural feel within the city limits was the vision and what was also thought to be what was needed by many of the city leaders, you know? Due to the lay of the land, the design standards from Table 1, if the design standards from Table 1 were applied, the character, design of the concept of the development would not be possible. The second request, ordinance 153.15, stormwater. And that ordinance F is stormwater sewer systems. Number one, the development shall be provided with adequate stormwater system whenever curb and gutters are installed and whenever evidence available to the commission that natural surface drainage is inadequate. When the surface drainage is adequate, easements for such surface drainage shall be provided. Curbs and gutters along the streets are required, however. If the commission finds it necessary to waive this requirement, a shallow swell with a low point at least three inches below the elevation of the subgrade of the pavement shall be installed. In this case, one of the following types of improvements shall be furnished at the driveway crossings, and then the ordinance explains how to construct a driveway, if you allow that to happen. Number three, ordinance 153.13, dash, E, dash, one, sidewalks. Sidewalks are required for all subdivisions. Sidewalks have a minimum width of four feet. Will be placed on both sides of the street. There must be at least three feet, but not more than five of grass area between the curb and the edge of the sidewalk. Our requests are that a modification be made to increase the distance between the street and the sidewalk to six feet. And the reason, just to provide additional safety and a better streetscape aesthetic. Number four, accessory structure size. Ordinance 155.017, dash, A1. One-family detached dwellings, including residential accessory structures consisting of a single detached building that does not exceed seven-hundred-and-twenty feet, a private swimming pool, private tennis court, or similar private accessory structures. Request, we're requesting that a maximum square footage of an accessory building be increased from seven-hundred-and-twenty feet to fifteen-hundred feet. Per the restrictive covenants of the preserve at Sand Creek, only lots 1, 2, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 9 will be permitted to contain accessory buildings. Reason, more storage, additional size would not adversely affect the property in lieu of the average size of lots. Lots 1, 2, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 9 being two-point-one acres, ninety-one thousand four-hundred-and-seventy-six square feet versus minimum size in R2 zoning of seven-thousand feet. I'll read the rest of this. We have demonstrated that items 1, 2, and 3 align with the list of reasons through a, under ordinance 153.75 as listed below. Granting these modifications and exceptions are unique to this property because of the lay of the land. I believe that we have met all of these, which, this is in 153.75. The commission may authorize and approve modifications from the requirements and standards of these regulations, including the waiver of standards and regulations upon finding that, one, practical difficulties have been demonstrated. Two, the requested modifications would not in any way contravene the purpose and intent of the comprehensive plan, the zoning ordinance, the official zoning map of the city, or subdivision control ordinance. Three, granting the modifications would not be detrimental to public safety, health, or welfare, and would not adversely affect the delivery of governmental services, water, sewer, fire, protection, et cetera. I'm assuming, et cetera, snow plowing. There's not much left other than what was listed, so. Granting the mod, uh, granting the modifications would neither substantially alter the essential character of the neighborhood nor result in substantial injury to other nearby properties. The conditions of the parcel that give rise to the practical difficulties are unique to the parcel and are not applicable generally to other nearby properties. The requested modifications represent the minimum modifications necessary to meet the intent of the regulations. Practical difficulties were not created by the partitioner, developer, or owner, or the subdivision. The practical difficulties cannot be overcome through reasonable design alternatives. I have one thing to add. The part about it, whether it's private, and it's okay for those homeowners to take care of that, or if it's city-maintained, where in the ordinance does it state that there's private streets allowed, period?
Are, are you asking me or is...
I'm asking anybody that would like to answer.
I'm not familiar with, with any requirement.
I read all twenty-two pages. It's not in there.
I, I agree with you. I would also point out that you don't meet any, or at least three of the qualifications necessary for a modification under that ordinance. You have not demonstrated any practical difficulties, and you certainly haven't demonstrated any practical difficulties, excuse me.
That's not true.
Let me finish. You've not demonstrated any practical difficulties that were not the creation of the developer and the subdivision. That being said, if this board, if this plan wants to approve it, then I think they, they should. That's, that's my legal opinion.
Okay.
I agree with you, though. There are no requirements for private streets in subdivision control.
Well, I did not create... I didn't...
I, I agree with that, yes.
And there are provisions in your ordinance to modify those requirements. I did not create the land. I did not, the practical difficulties come with the fact of how you would have to treat that ground, how you would have to design that to put more detention ponds. That's an engineering standpoint. Those are the practical difficulties that I'm talking about.
And, and just...
I did not create it. I did not make the lay of the land, have thirty-foot elevation drops from top to bottom of those hills.
Okay, and then, so just, just for the record, so it's clear, those are the practical developments, the difficulties that, those are the practical difficulties that you as the developer are seeing and are asking for a modification for.
Right.
And those are not the, the result of anything you did, but the result of the topography of the land?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Do you have anything else?
No.
This time, is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address the commission?
Gary Herbert. You know, we've looked at this a lot, trying to find ways to make this happen. I think the overall project is indeed a great task that Mr. Whitaker's taken on. I believe it's something that our community needs, what he's doing. Does it fit some of the needs, like the three-hundred-foot radius for turns and things? It doesn't for city streets. Trying to maintain the original topography of it, if at all possible, and keep the country sitting, I think is a good thing. I support what he's trying to do. I, I do have one question. Now, why I haven't asked Jeff this before. If the roads are gonna be maintained by the city, if they were, or are in the future, does it now become open to the public if the city taxpayers will, and gonna pay the taxes on it? Shouldn't anybody be able to drive through it? That's one question I do, I haven't thought of before.
Sorry, didn't ask that before Jeff.
But, that's a concern. I don't know what's gonna happen here. I hope that the housing addition goes forward. I don't, we went, we've worked on this a lot. Jeff has worked on it a lot, tried to get to this point. I don't think a line in the sand should be drawn. I think there's some way, should be a happy medium that we can all agree upon. You know, in, in our ordinance, it says safety. If we don't let the roads, don't require the roads to be built according to the ordinance, and we make it a public street, are we in fact putting the public in jeopardy? That's one thing. So, you know, kind of if it doesn't go by our ordinances as far as safety and the speed limits and things like that, it almost has to be private. And this kind of all started, you know, if I have a nice home, and I don't live in anything that's gonna be near as nice as what they are there, I still expect my trash to be picked up. And it started, lawyer, would try and maybe look at release of liability or indemnification for trash to be picked up on those people's homes. You're talking about twenty-five people, twenty-five homes. You know, you like to furnish as much as you can of city services. What we're allowed to and what fits our ordinance. You know, I wouldn't see anything wrong if one of you guys built a house out there and you'd like at least have your trash picked up. You know, if that's the only service you're gonna get, that's what started it. So I don't know what we can do or where, where we can come in the middle of agreement to keep the citizens of the city safe. And if it is gonna be a city road, like I said before, I think anybody in the city would have to be able to drive on it because the taxes spent on it in the future and the maintenance, the snow plowing, and everything else. I mean, everybody pays taxes. Some people pay more than others. But we own a home, we all pay something. I don't know if you can make a decision tonight, or if you want to, would wanna go ahead and make a decision and approve it based on the private roads to where the, you at least continue building homes and get things plotted here in the near, very near future. Just a suggestion. I see, we want to work with people who want to work with the community. Mr. Whitaker is, you know, this is his business, construction and building homes and buildings. But he's also been a bit of part of the community, trying to see our community go forward and progress. I know we just can't open the book up and give, give him whatever we ask for, but I'm just asking everybody to work as hard as you can to try to come up with some, some sort of agreement. If not tonight, in the near future, but if there can be something done where he could at least go ahead and continue on tonight, even if, even if it is considered, if you build on something considered, private, where we don't accept the streets. I don't know how to build roads. I do know there is ways, and I'm sure there's a couple of engineers, two or three engineers in this room could tell you how to do the core samples to see if it is built according to our spec as far as compaction and blacktop and amount of gravel and everything else. If the soil had been graded, the topsoil taken off before the gravel was compacted and things like that. Those are things that, you know, you possibly do pending testing done by the developer. It's too late for us to do it now to be on the, on the scene to inspect, because part of it's already laid down. Not all of it, but a portion of it's been laid down. So I'm just asking you to think about it carefully and do what you can. I'm sure you will. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. Please step forward, state your name and record.
I'm Christine Townsend. I've lived in, I don't know, it used to be called Fair, Fairview, I don't know what it's being called now, since two thousand and seven. I live the last lot, or the last house, on Christie Lane Road Street. It has all three names. And I, I look out into this hayfield. It's currently a hayfield. I have a master's in environment, and I realize that right now that hayfield has got the best possibility for absorbing water that anything ever could. When I first moved here in two thousand and seven, the little creek that drains all those fields on the perimeter, they drain into that little creek, and we didn't have to have much rain at all until that little creek overflowed and there was a lake for two or three days. I've talked to Jeff about this, and he told me what the problem was, and, and things have gotten better in the last couple of years. But last week, when we had all that snow melt, and we had rain, we had a lake again. Now, he doesn't have any plots in that specific area. He's got one right up to it, and another one right up to it, and another one right up to it. But we had a lake again there last week. And I thought, I thought then, I hadn't seen a lake for a while, and with the snow melt and the rain, I wondered. And it stayed there for, oh, maybe a day and a half before it drained off. So I also know that if you build houses with basements and garages and driveways and sidewalks and streets, there's gonna be less ability for that land to absorb that moisture. So it's just an observation. It's always had drainage problems out there, and I don't think they're gonna go away. Did you see it?
Anybody else in the audience who'd like to address the board?
First of all, I guess thanks to the mayor for supporting the project, and Gary Murray, both of them do, they just, possible, possible, if things going in a different manner. I still do not think that we're requesting anything that is outside of the ability for the commission to grant. The more, as Christine Townsend said, the more ground that we use to absorb the water, the better it's gonna be. If we divert it all to the bottom, it's just, you're just creating a, a bigger problem of having to deal with another detention pond. So there's a lot of acreage, there's a lot of hillside, and if you use those hillside to absorb the water as much as possible before it runs off, that's what we're trying to do. As far as testing, I got no problem testing the roads. You know, when it's, when we get everything done, I'm more than happy, I'm more than happy, just like always, just like I did in West Ridge, Phase 1, Phase 2, in Auburn Hills also, and in the commercial part of West Ridge. You know, I, I have no problem with providing the city with the warranty through the extended time that is normal for every development that I've done and that every other developer is required to do. There again, the last thing I got to say is, it's not gonna be on my back forever. I'm doing it because there's gonna be twenty-five people that invest in this community that I do not believe should be saddled with that burden. I think that their tax dollars are to be used to maintain their street as well as everybody else's streets. Thanks for your consideration. I appreciate your time.
Yes, sir. Jeff, do you have the, all the streets paved now?
No, no, it's less than half.
Are you willing for the city to inspect them before you do any more?
Yeah, that's fine. They can come, do whatever, you know, maybe we can, and I can, as we're rolling out the stone, that, you know, it's, when we cut it before and or after, when the stone's been rolled and that, or whatever, that's fine too. I'm good with that.
I guess my only concern is with roads in place now, is from the experience of driving tandem, I've tried fully loaded the sand or an ordinary truck. Is that, it heats up, asphalt does, and you make a turn, your wheels push that asphalt. And when you have a curb in place, it kind of holds it in place, and then you don't have that lesser chance of breaking it off on the edge.
That's, that could be, Bruce, I mean, I, I don't know if I, I guess it's, any, any type of boundary that you would have, I suppose would help that, but I don't, I don't know that, when you go... that, when you go out to Sears, and you plow the streets there, that the city took from the developer there that was done with no curb and gutters or anything else that the city accepted, I don't see the asphalt being pushed off into the ditch, so I, I don't know.
Well, I know at the end of the road, it heats up, the basie road gets most of the old pieces there. We've actually had to hire a contractor, go in there for the drainage tolerance, due to all the excess water that's been created there. I know getting part of the lots and the bed itself, and trying to deter that water from staying on the side and becoming a hazard to the motors.
And, and, and that's valuable, and, and another good, that you're on the west side of town where everything's flat, you know, I mean, it's, there's, there's not, there isn't a lot of options in that case, and I know that. I put, I paid, I spent over $3 million on the infrastructure for West Ridge, and another $2 million for the commercial part, and I know that there wasn't a lot of options. Steve Bart did the design work, there wasn't a lot they could do with, to do it in that manner, so.
I've got another question.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is this going to be private again? I know Gary mentioned that, is it open to the public, the roads?
Well...
Or is it going to be gated, or...
What I was attempting to do was to provide a gated unit, the first in our area. There are no rules written for it. There are not, there is not one word in these, in the entire 22 pages of the city's control, subdivision control ordinance that addresses a gated community, period. There's, there's not nothing. There, there's, I thought it would be something that would be attractive to people that, that may want to live in that type of environment, and that would, you know, hopefully attract more people that, that would build the type of homes that we're looking to put in that area, by the lots, the size of the lots, the, the smallest lot is more than twice as big as any of the lots that were previously approved on Jack's Way, which was the original plans were for, as you guys know, 150 some odd houses in there. We're doing, we're doing 23, and then two on the...